Okay. Good evening. The meeting of the Board of Education of the Sedalia School District 200 is now called to order at 6:30. The secretary will call the roll of each board member and as a reminder, make sure your microphone is turned on and with these mics, make sure you're up close and talking into it. The secretary will call the roll of each board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by saying "here."
Dr. Barth Fagan.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Groupie.
Here.
Mr. Kempton.
Here.
Mrs. Moon.
Here.
Ms. Nichols.
Here.
And Ms. Schrader is here.
If you will please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving to recognitions and presentations, as a reminder, anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And as you approach the podium, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you wish to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satin and he will share those items at the conclusion of our meeting. Remarks are to be limited to three minutes and one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. And I don't see anybody from the Sedalia School District Foundation. So NEA, Mrs. Harvey?
Hi, good evening. I'm Amanda Harvey and this year I'm serving as Vice President of Sedalia NEA. I've worked for the Sedalia School District for the -- of course, my phone rings. I've worked for the Sedalia School District for the past 15 years and I've seen many changes in our educational system throughout that time. And while I've never been shy to express my opinion of such changes, what I appreciate about a teachers' union such as Sedalia NEA is that we provide a platform for teachers to speak together and advocate for teachers' rights. This year, our leadership team will be meeting quarterly to allow building reps to bring forth concerns and celebrations from their buildings. Our first meeting is next -- no, this Wednesday, the 30th. We have had members express concerns about changes to Policy 4505 and we've invited Dr. Fraley. I think he's got that on that calendar and we appreciate that open lines of communication to be able to discuss that at our meeting. Sedalia NEA is a growing group. We now have 115 members and our focus is to unite, inspire, and create leaders within the Sedalia School District. And I'd also like to mention how excited I am to be part of the Queen City CAPS program. I believe it's an innovative program that just might be the model needed for educating today's youth and I'd like to invite any of you to stop by my classroom. My CAPS classroom is out at Maxion Wheels. So thank you for your time and thank each of you for serving on our board.
Thank you.
My name is Jordan Fields. I have several things to share with you this evening, so I'm going to try to move through them quickly. First, the Educator of the Year nomination form opened this month during the week of parent-teacher conferences. Anyone active in the Sedalia 200 School District, including parents, staff, and students, are encouraged to nominate a teacher that they feel is deserving of recognition. SCEA is partnering with the SCFBLA again this fall for our fundraiser sales of T-shirts and crewnecks. We will close those sales November 18th. The SCEA Staff Scholarship Application will open after our November meeting next week and links to all three of these items can be found on the Sedalia 200 website under Staff and then under SCEA and then are also pinned to the top of our Facebook page. This month, it was brought to my attention that SCEA members had concerns about Board Policy 4505 in regards to horizontal movement. After surveying our members, I concluded that there is indeed some confusion and misunderstanding surrounding the policy despite Mr. Curry's efforts of clarification provided to all staff via email. Survey results have been shared with the appropriate parties and we look forward to Dr. Fraley, Mr. Curry, and Ms. Nichols joining us at our November meeting with feedback to clarify and settle the concerns of our members. We will be voting building-wide on the award of Associate of the Year with the winner of each building being named later in November. And SCEA is proud to announce that along with Educator of the Year, Associate of the Year, we have created a third awards category, Professional of the Year, to help recognize staff members who do not fall -- oh, ah, sorry. Who do not fall under either of our current award categories in hopes to recognize more of our fabulous Sedalia 200 staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Middleton, are you doing the presentation for Middle School Athletic Director of the Year? Okay.
And sorry, Mr. Foster couldn't be here tonight, but I figured he would bust through the door here in a little bit and maybe surprise us, but it didn't look like he's going to. So at a meeting earlier on this year with the Central Region Athletic Directors, Mr. Foster had been nominated and voted in as the Middle School Athletic Director of the Year. So he'll get an award at the spring conference, which is in April down at the lake, and then also he'll be in the running for the state middle school athletic director of the year down there. So as you know, he's very good at what he does and this is a very well-deserved. So hopefully, we can get him in the next one, present him a little award. But he'll get a nice award. We'll see him in a suit and tie this April, so it'd be great. Yep.
Thank you and congratulations to him. Next is Get Your Teach On led by Mr. Frye.
Good evening. If I could have the board come down to the floor, we're going to lower this screen for our presentation.
Okay. Test.
It's a good sound system.
Yeah.
Slow fade. Slow faded out.
We're going to go ahead and move over to the Heckert now.
Okay, so I feel weird. Let me flip this because everybody's behind us. Can I take it off? I don't like being restricted though. Okay, so we wanted to talk about, so this summer, this group right here, along with several of our teachers, had the opportunity to go to Get Your Teach On. And part of that is, one of those components is the Get Your Lead On component, which is what this group right here all were able to attend. And so we just wanted to talk about just the, what we got from it and the importance of it. And honestly, we would like to spearhead and see this across our district, sending more people to it because it was probably the best professional development that we had ever had. One of the important concepts to Get Your Teach On is the fact that it is, it's like speed dating PD because it moves very quickly, but everything you get is laid out right there for you and it's something that is very applicable to whatever school you're in. And we even talked about just with this group, just being as far as elementary is concerned, taking our district initiatives that we already have and then how can we take the things that we learned from Get Your Teach On, all those different components, and apply them to each of our buildings. But it was more than just the PD piece, it was the networking. So we were able to form relationships with other leaders. Some were instructional coaches, some of them were assistant principals, some of them were regular principals, and we were able to network with those people and just talk about and come up with great ideas. But it is, it is quick, it is intentional. And so we wanted to kind of talk about all the different things that we're specifically doing in each of our buildings. So I'm going to start with showcasing Sedalia Middle School. So we started kind of towards the middle of last year. We talked about the vision of an educator. We knew that that was something that we were, we had talked about for quite some time, the vision of also not just of an educator, but of a student. So one of the things that we learned in the leadership portion was creating profiles. What do you expect from a student every single time, every single lesson? So this is my, these are my teachers at our first staff meeting, the beginning of the school year, and we came up with every, every lesson, every time, what do we want our students to do? And so those are listed there. They came up with those. We all kind of, we narrowed it down. And then from there, we took it as to if that's what we're expecting from every single student, every single time, what do, what do our, what do students need from us every single time? And then even as far as me as the leader, what did they need from me to make sure that every learner in our building is meeting our expectations and is truly learning? So these are, this is basically our matrix that we have posted all over our building and we bring it up every single time, every single meeting. So this was just one of the things that we learned at Get Your Teach On. The other thing that I experienced for the first time this year, and some of the elementaries had already done, was Rock Your School Day. And so my teachers actually transformed their classrooms just for, and we do engage learning or engage engagement strategies and stuff like that all the time, but truly transforming the classroom. So the floor is lava, we did all these different things, still meeting our standards and still teaching those, of course, but making education more fun, more hands-on. And so this was something that we experienced this year and our teachers and our students loved it. We even took it to the next level that we're going to create transformation boxes that we are going to create for our teachers and so they can pull them out for any lesson and completely transform their classroom at any time, at any point in the school year. The other portion that we did then is how are we going to, after what, after we talked about kind of what we expect of teachers, we talked about the five to thrive, which are habits of highly effective teachers. Ms. Meyer would agree to this probably and the rest of the group behind me that this was a lot to bite off at one time. But basically, we tied, we created our own document, we tied it to the knee, but like right now, we are focusing on proximity and then we're also talking about standard, standards-driven instruction. And so just like we score our students on a proficiency scale three, two, and one, we are doing that with our teachers. It's been, it's been great as far as providing them with feedback. So those have been our two focuses. We're talking about our ICAN statements, goal settings, proximity and pacing, and all of those different things. And then we have our SMS tiger tracking, which I'll let Ms. Thomas talk about, how she incorporates that as the instructional coach in my building.
Before I start with the tiger tracking, I will say the five to thrive is very applicable to us because we are going standards-based here in the fifth grade center and it is a new frame of mind for our teachers. And so always pulling those proficiency scales up and what's expected and having teacher or students know what is expected is very important. Why am I learning this? What is the purpose of my learning? And so all of these things like having your ICAN statements posted, explaining what is expected of your students throughout the whole lesson, not just in the beginning, it is ownership for their learning. And so giving a three, two, one helps that teacher understand. It is positive feedback in understanding how I can do the best that I can do and always form good, effective habits. SMS tiger tracking, this is an extension to kind of a data analysis to a test. So our teachers received their unit tests after they were taken by students. They were asked to do an item analysis on every single question. How many students chose A, B, C, D? And then go through and just kind of puke all over the test. What were misconceptions? What did the students think was right and why do we think they thought that this was right when it was really wrong? Was there something about the question that might have misled my students? A distractor? Is it a test type, a question type, that might have created a problem for my students? And so maybe it didn't even fully meet the standard. And so it allows the teacher to really reflect on each question as a whole. And then they get this tiger tracking sheet and in that first, all the way to the left, it says 100% of my students get it. So they make a plan. So if it's base 10 numbers and all of my students have it, I don't really have to touch it a lot. Maybe I bring it up, you know, I have to get a data point every, every unit, so maybe I'm just going to bring it up once or twice during the unit. Now, part of that proficiency scale though, might be that they have to justify their answer. Well, we know that students don't, don't know how to justify usually and writing is hard for them. And so all the way to the right, it says less than 50% of my students get it. So on that same math standard, same proficiency scale, I know that I need to work on justification. And so that is a type of question that I need to bring through in my spiraling, maybe my formative Fridays in my math classes. It is something that has to be placed in front of my students all the time and we have to go over it, whether it is my favorite no in picking the formative that is almost correct and talking about how to make it even more correct with my students, but constant reflection. And then maybe 80% of my students get it. That's the second column. If 80% of my students get it, I know that 20% of my students need small group. I need to meet with them and I need to reteach it and I need to touch base on that specific bullet point on that, on that proficiency scale or that piece that would fulfill that number three standard. If half of my students get it, I'm probably going to bring it back quite a bit. I'm going to spiral it, I'm going to bring it back weekly until we show mastery on the next unit. And then, so I brought this book called Grit. I don't know if you've ever read it, but there is a section in this book that talks about a well-known cardiac surgeon and he was placed on a simulation for cardiac surgery and he went through it multiple times. And the guy clearly had gone to school, a university, well-known. He was very intelligent, but he couldn't get past a certain simulation. It gave him feedback every single time. But the only thing that got him to be a better surgeon for that simulation and pass and move on to the next task was to stop and reflect. And so no matter how many times he took it, he never, he didn't pass it until he stopped and really looked at why he missed the things that he did. And so that just proves that taking time to use something like this tracker, which is very simple, but it allows them to form a plan for every piece of that standard. Some pieces of that standard might be pretty simple, but when you've got something like justification which intimidates students, it allows them to move even further.
All right. This is Mrs. Helvey. She is our instructional coach at Washington. And heading in to Get Your Lead On for me, going into a brand-new building, was especially interesting and fun and new, but it gave Ms. Helvey and I a chance to really collaborate together. She knows the staff, the community, the students. I am learning the population and also together, we're working on what are our goals? What is the year going to look like? So in the summer, these are some quotes that really stuck out to us in a session about building a culture of excellence and a climate of community building. So we just jotted these down, we, you know, it was a, they were great talking points for us to think about heading into the year. It also helped her learn about my leadership style and then how she and I can work together to support one another. So today, oops, let's go back. So while I was there, I was kind of, was very overwhelmed with really great information that I knew I wasn't going to be able to come back and dive into all of it. I'm kind of the type that wants to, let's do it all, all of it. And I knew that wasn't a good choice and we talked about what are some of the year one goals. So a lot of the things that I focused in on, it was the school-wide collaboration session and then I was thinking about what our staff at Washington was telling me in the spring. These are some of the things that we're thinking about, some of the things. We had these one-on-one conversations with each staff member and something kept coming out that they wanted to tell their story. It was just constant, constant, constant. Well, then we hit a session that was all about learning about your community, learning about your staff community, your student community, and your community of, your family community. And so it came to my mind with all the sessions, the quotes, the material, that we really needed to tell the story of who we are. And the same things kept coming up. Kindness was, is important to our staff, community, excellence, and results. And so we came back from this conference where that was going to be our Washington way. That is our hashtag and what we're going to build on. So this summer, well, right as school was starting, we collaborated together on how were we going to address those items and building, or what do we do to showcase kindness? How do we tell that story? How do we tell the story of the importance of our community, excellence, and results? We did a lot of staff build, or community building within our back-to-school PD, you know, lots of pictures decorating. We, you know, the staff came together and really pitched in to get ready for all of that. So that was really great that this was our staff meeting. But within that time, up in the corner with the construction crew, that was, each grade level team had $10 to go out into the community. They could spend it any way they wanted, but it was on like an act of kindness. So it's team building for the staff, but also talking about who we are as a school at Washington. So they, we would tell them, we're doing this kindness challenge and they took a picture. So we had a lot of examples of, you know, them spreading kindness, we brought their pictures back together and that was a great time. We are working on getting parents into the building for awards and assemblies and volunteering, those kinds of things. Down here is our High Five Mondays. We're going to start each Monday with businesses, organizations. This is Dad's, Dad's Edition. So we didn't have as many, but they are ready to go again. They cannot wait for their next Dad's Edition of High Five. So they just stand there, greet the kids. It's a great way to start a Monday. We had a building-wide field trip, which was a first for me, but our entire building left to go to the pumpkin patch, staff and the students. That was a great building experience. And then we're really working on telling our story through social media. That is not really my strength to post on social media, but I'm finding those in the building that it is their strength to help tell our story and to be sure that it's a positive message to form our connections, build those connections, so we have those social media platforms. And then also showcasing our students in a really positive way and building those connections as well.
So Heber Hunt, this is Mr. Xemenes. He is my instructional coach. I know everybody knows him, he's famous. If he won his autograph, it's $5. That's what I tell everybody, it's going to be our fundraiser for the year. So when we came back, the one thing about Get Your Teach On and Get Your Lead On that I noticed just right off the bat is just the energy that fills the rooms, no matter whether you're walking into the main hall or whether you're walking into your room. Like we were in a room with just other leaders. Kindergarten had its own room and every room had its own theme and it was over the top. Ours was like a coffee shop, kind of chill. There was like an ice cream shop, a candy store. I mean, it's, everything is big, big and bold. And taking on standards-based grading this year, we knew that was going to be big and that is a really bold step for our future. And so I'm going to let Mr. X talk a little bit about how he rolled it out and then we're going to talk about where we went from how he rolled out standards-based grading this year.
All right. Well, just want to get started by saying that Get Your Teach On is probably the best professional development I think I've ever been to. I think like Angie said, the energy was just infectious. The minute you walked through the door, the smiling, the cheering, but they also got down to the nitty-gritty and what you need in order to be successful. So what I took away, being a new coach and yes, this is year two for me, and moving towards standards-based grading, I was like, how can I get my building excited about this transition? We know that it is going to be, you know, a big task and I was like, how can I roll it out to experience veteran teachers as well as the new six teachers, the new six teachers that we had in our building this year? So what I did was I, we did have a standards-based picnic. So that was my very first team meeting of the year where I decorated my office, I had snacks, and I really wanted it to be a very fun rollout for them. So we wanted to talk about those Missouri State standards. We know that they are very extensive, they are very dense, they are very wordy. So if we just throw that standard up on the board and have our students reference it, it really won't carry much weight to them. So I really wanted to phrase it in terms of a picnic and I did go with the pie theme. There was a quote at Get Your Teach On that says, "Kids can't be held accountable for a standard they didn't know existed." So our kids need to know the standards just like our teachers do because it doesn't serve us any purpose for us to be teaching these standards and then we go ask a student and they have no idea what it is the whole goal of the day was. So we talked about how a Missouri State standard is looked at more as a pie. Now, not many of us can sit down and one sitting and just eat an entire cherry pie. That's very difficult to do. So I told my teachers, I want you to think of the Missouri State standard as a pie, however, I want you to create learning targets for each day that you're teaching a lesson. Now that learning target would be more referenced as just a single cherry that goes into making that pie. So what we do every week during planned time is we create learning targets for the week. So this is just an example of a kindergarten one where they were working on measurement. We talk about what is the learning target going to be on the board? We talk about what is the activity that we're going to name for that day or do for that day to make it concrete for them? And then what is the activity steps and what does it look like so that all teachers are clear on the learning target as well as what the standard is for that day?
So he was the beginning of our room transformation rollout. We budgeted in this year $25 for each teacher per semester, so $50 for the year extra above their classroom budget for room transformations. So I just showcased some. So our kid, oh, sorry, go back a little bit. Our kindergarten, they're, you know, it's pretty simple in kindergarten, but M is for Moon. This was last week, they did a whole space theme. We had students dress up as astronauts. Our teachers went way overboard. We had aliens, we had Miss Frizzle, we had astronauts, we had all the things. And they turned each classroom into a different part of space and they did space activities all day long with the idea of their standards in place. So it was to enhance their standards, not take away from it. So everything that was planned that day was a standard that needed to be taught. Go ahead to the next one. First grade, first grade is really, they've taken off. They are kind of on fire. We had a teacher write a, like a grant. Ms. Webb wrote a grant and so they have a lot of extra money that they're loving their lives. So they did main idea and details. They turned each classroom into a different biome and the kids rotated all day long. So when they went into, was it jungle, the one, the word they had? And then they went into the Arctic and then they had like frozen ice and stuff and so every kid got the same experience. They just went to all the different biomes. They also had a bat day. They turned their rooms into caves, lights out, bats flying from the ceiling fans. It was really, really, really cool with the idea that main idea and details were their standard that day. In third grade, our third grade ELA teachers worked on stamina and they had Panera donate. Basically, they turned their rooms into a coffee shop where they could sit around and in their favorite spots and read. They're really working on stamina. And then our
We had aliens, we had Ms. Frizzle, we had astronauts, we had all the things. And they turned each classroom into a different part of space, and they did space activities all day long with the idea of their standards in place. So it was to enhance their standards, not take away from it. So, everything that was planned that day was a standard that needed to be taught. Go ahead to the next one. First grade, first grade is really, they've taken off, they are kind of on fire. We had a teacher write a, like a grant, Ms. Webb wrote a grant, and so they have a lot of extra money that they're loving their lives. So, they did main idea and details, they turned each classroom into a different biome, and the teach, the kids rotated all day long. So, when they went into, was it jungle, the one, the word they had?
Yep.
And then, they went into the Arctic, and then they had like frozen ice and stuff, and so every kid got the same experience, they just went to all the different biomes. They also had a bat day, they turned their rooms into caves, lights out, bats flying from the ceiling fans, it was really, really, really cool, with the idea that main idea and details were their standard that day. In third grade, our third grade ELA teachers worked on stamina, and they had Panera donate. Basically, they turned their rooms into a coffee shop where they could sit around and, in their favorite spots and read, they're really working on stamina. And then, our math teachers did a place-value picnic to end their place-value unit, in which kids worked through different activities to kind of finish up, like solidify that place-value unit. And then, fourth grade, they did a, we do a review of third grade fractions in fourth grade, and so to make it, to spice it up a little bit, they did a game day where it was like football, I think it was called fraction football, and it was all based around the game of, or it was all based around fraction reteach. And then even our special, the next one, our special teacher is getting into it, we have the best librarian. Ms. Woolery did a book tasting for our second graders, who are just getting started into our accelerated reader program. And so they're learning how to check out those books that are on their level in the library, and so each table was a different level, and the kids went to their table and they learned what it looked like to check out books on their level.
So Mrs. Hannah Brick, I think, did a presentation several board meetings ago with Lenisha Tabs. And so, I was hearing a lot about Lenisha, 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 Lenisha. And so, I went to her website, because I thought, okay, I have not gone to Get Your Teach On, but wanted to see what all the excitement was about. So, went to her website, also talked to several teachers, and actually, Ms. Hannah Brick is on Lenisha's website, at the very bottom of, given a quote. So I reached out, just by a wing, and sent her a message and asked her if she was available to speak, or to talk over the phone, and she is, and actually, she is coming on Friday. And so, our staff is very excited. So I asked her to send a video out to kind of get that hype up. So I'd like to play that for you.
And, hey there, Sedalia200, my name is Lenisha Tab, and I am so excited because on November 1st, I am headed your way. We get to spend some time together talking about my very favorite thing, which is writing instruction. As a teacher that used to dread writing, I am now the biggest cheerleader for incorporating writing in everything that we do. So, I'm going to be coming, I'm going to be dropping off tons of strategies that you could turn around and use the very next day. I'm going to offer a framework that can be used throughout all of the grade levels to maximize writing instruction, and we're even going to get to do some vertical alignment, where all of the grade levels are going to have a chance to see what those expectations look like across an entire school. That's going to really propel your students forward, and I'm so excited. And then that's not all, because after we spend that time together on November 1st, I get to come back. I get to come back on Valentine's Day at that. So I'm leaving my man behind, and I'm coming to spend the day with you all, and I couldn't be more excited. So, get ready, I'm going to pack my stuff up, I'm going to be preparing on my end, and I cannot wait to see you all on November 1st.
So we rolled this video out on one of the PD days, actually September 30th, and you should have seen the excitement, it was priceless. So, it's exciting to see the teachers get excited about professional development, and actually, the coaches and I are reading, doing a book study on, PD is, should be like a party. So we're going to have a party on Friday. So, anyway, just wanted to share that from, Lenisha is a big presenter with Get Your Teach On.
Okay, so that wraps it up from this team, but I just want to say that I think all of us can agree that that was probably the most intense, best professional development we've ever had, sending our teachers and seeing their exciting faces when they, when they came back, and while they were there. It just really helped teachers remember their why. Why, and at the end of the day, why do we do what we do? And it was, it was great. And our goal, I feel like, as a district, moving forward, should be to send more teachers and more leaders to help build our, build our, build our team. Any questions? All right, thank you.
I do have to admit, in my almost 12 years of being on the school board, I think this is a first to hear, I loved professional development. So, thank you all very, very much, I appreciate hearing that. And now I would like to hear a motion to approve the agenda, in a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Frye, might, you managed to get it on, can you please get it off? It's blinding us up here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And we have the consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.8, do I have a motion to accept those items?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, 4.9, payment of bills with Dr. Barth Fagan abstaining from this item, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And 4.10, payment of bills with Mr. Gardner abstaining, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
4.11, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
4.12, payment of bills with Ms. Moon abstaining, do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
4.13, payment of bills with Ms. Schrader abstaining, do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did I get them all?
I think you did.
What about you?
Okay. So we will move on to decision, did I miss Pam's?
No.
Okay.
He asked about yours.
Decision, unfinished business, Dr. Fraley, did you want to address 5.1?
Yes, 5.1, policy and regulation slash form changes. We had received these, these were in the board packet for discussion last month. These are recommendations coming from our policymaker, MCE. It has been brought to our attention, and in doing, from doing a little bit of homework there today, we had seen that MCE didn't necessarily cross-reference those policies to our existing customized policies that we have in place. So I'm recommending that we table this. These are largely in part due to Senate Bill 727, which takes effect July 1, 2026. But, I'm recommending we table that till next month, that'll give us time to cross-reference these to our existing customized policies with MCE, and have communication with MCE to, to make sure we're consistent.
How much time do you need on that?
I don't, I don't believe, by our November meeting, we should be fine.
I move to postpone consideration of these policy and regulation and form changes to our November meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. The next item is the school site, concrete projects, Mr. Pyle.
Yes, our Board of Education reviewed as a discussion item at our September meeting, the district's pursuit of bids for concrete work at Smith Cotton High School, Smith Cotton Junior High, and here at the Sedalia Middle School. The district was contacted by three interested contractors after we put those bid designations out for those that were interested, and after, after they had contacted us, we did have one show up for bid opening day. And I'll talk about that with the bid estimate from McCollister Construction LLC here in Sedalia was the one that showed with the bid. The work at Smith Cotton High School will be additional, concrete is needed for the scoreboard area inside the Tiger Stadium. New sidewalk with concrete strips for a track bleacher pad for field events, this, that work was not included in our work that's going on out there now with Vernon Jones. We want to improve the dock area, and that's another sidewalk at the northwest corner of Smith Cotton High School. This effort will allow our band, music, and drama departments to improve travel and loading options. The work at Smith Cotton Junior High is to add an addition of equipment storage facility and a trash dumpster location. And here at the middle school, we'll add additional concrete and improve the trash dumpster location here as well. So, with the consideration of the, of the interested contractors, and also talking to Hollis and Miller to find, just to kind of get their ideas with, make sure that bid was submitted at a fair market value, we felt like that that was. And I recommend for approval, McCollister Construction LLC to complete the work at Smith Cotton High School, Smith Cotton Junior High, and at the Sedalia Middle School for the amount of $213,135.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. And Dr. Fraley, the Bobcat and Track Loader Equipment Purchase?
Yeah, we discussed this at the last meeting, bringing that back for potential decision. I went out and priced a Bobcat UW-56 with attachments, and the amount of, quoted to me at $99,570.72 that we would use in the upkeep of our Smith Cotton Loftus campus. And then, in addition to that, I had a Track Loader, new Track Loader purchased, again, Bobcat offers entities such as school districts, their app price pricing, for those, that equipment usage and purchase. I'm recommending that we would go ahead, the UW-56 is a very versatile tool, that will allow us to do a lot of things to upkeep those grounds, buildings and grounds. I'm going to make the recommendation to not go with the Track Loader, that came in brand new at just over $100,000, I think that is too big of a investment for the usage, so I'm asking permission for up to $50,000 to go on the market for a used Track Loader, that will be used district-wide.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Okay, thank you. And the communications plan update, Dr. Fraley and Mr. Satin?
Yes, and you have in front of you, again, this is a revised communication plan from, if you remember last year, was kind of the first year that we had developed a true communications plan, the work of Mr. Satin. And he's made a few adjustments after a year of experience and work, and you guys have, look in the final pages of that plan, and I, he has given a description of those adjustments. So it's just a little revision of the plan to move forward and just continue to do basically what we've been doing. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Satin?
The one key piece is, as of today, in the first episode of Tiger Tales, an interview program with Superintendent Dr. Fraley is on our YouTube channel and share on our social media platforms. That's a cooperative effort with our CAPS program.
Oh, nice.
Charlotte Fisher and our CAPS program, she did most of the filming and did the editing on that package, and we're very pleased with it, and it's a great way to share some important information with our district and give our students an opportunity to get some more information and project.
And I want to applaud it for, you know, the survey data and evaluation, self-evaluation piece of this, you turn page 178 in your packet, you'll see that a favorable feedback in the May 2024 survey, more than 90% and 91.5% of staff said the district is providing the key information that they need via, you know, all of our, our mediums to communicate. So, that is a very highly favorable comment from our, our constituents.
Agree. Yeah, I was, I was glad to see that, that was good. Are there any questions, comments, thoughts regarding the communications plan update for either Dr. Fraley or Mr. Satin? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the communication plan as, as, plan update as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And the next item is the Construction Solutions and Consulting LLC donation.
My name is, hi, my name is Jeremy Brownfield, I'm a teacher at the junior high. Over time, I've developed a professional relationship with CSC here in town, it's a local business, and their chief financial officer, Nathan Crowe, has been a guest speaker in my classroom several times. They have offered a donation of $300 for an exercise bike with a desk for my classroom. The idea behind the desk is to refocus students' behavior before we have a behavior issue, and furthermore, relieve stress as well as anxiety. The students, they seem to truly love these bikes, they practically fight over them. So I love them, and I try to get them when I can. So if the board would be willing to please accept the $300 donation, that would be great, if we can please, it's up to you.
Very great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Brownfield before he steps away from the podium? So, do I hear a motion to approve Construction Solutions and Consulting LLC donation in the amount of $300 for exercise bike with a built-in desk as presented?
So moved.
All in favors, or, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Scott and I said it together. And next is Ms. Gilmore with the BTC Bank donation.
Yes, Sedalia200 would like to recognize BTC Bank. They contacted us a while ago and would like to donate $500, and that $500 to go towards our lunch balances for some of our students. So I'm requesting approval for the BTC $500 donation for lunch balances.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gilmore?
Move to approval.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor, say nay. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the 1700 Lafayette.
Yes, the district is very excited to see an almost empty shell over there at 1700 South Lafayette. The interior renovation plans that were prepared by Hollis and Miller for a reminder for our board and public watching, that we still could use those in the future if everything comes together, but having a clean starting paint, point for those interior construction items will give us a substantial savings as compared to those first bid documents that we previously rejected as a Board of Education. So, in an effort to continue to completely be ready for this and to have those options moving forward, the district sought a proposal from home heating, cooling, and plumbing to complete rough-end plumbing work per renovation plans that we had reviewed before, and they did provide a bid of $29,111 that would include concrete cutting and excavation, concrete and debris removal, plumbing around rough-end per the plans that were created, Schedule 40 PVC for underground work, concrete pouring and finished work, all permits for this work to be done, a two-inch service from the meter to the building, and this would also include excavation in backfield. So district administration would like to continue to make progress at this location, and it's my recommendation to accept this quote from home heating, cooling, and plumbing in the amount of $29,111. It's well below the bid process that we would have to do.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And you have the next one as well, correct? Okay.
Yes, this is again on Yes, yes. This is again on seventeen hundred South Lafayette. As we just mentioned, nearing completion on the, on the tear out of the interior that was there before. So through that demolition work, home heating, cooling, plumbing discovered when they were there, working with our team, that five existing HVAC air handlers would, would be able to be utilized in the future if the district wanted to reconfigure and use those same plans that were brought to us by Hollis and Miller. And in effort to save money and be good stewards, the team considered this savings. The option would provide a savings of up to eighty-five thousand dollars if we would do this by utilizing the existing units in comparison to HVAC bids that were turned in previously when we first rejected. So felt this was a cost-effective approach. Home Heating Cooling provided a quote to do this worked at nineteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. And that would take down five existing HVAC units to relocate them and be ready for use in the interior plans that we could approve in the future. These would be wired, ready to roll. And didn't point out these, these units are only four years old on average that we'd be using.
That's good.
It is my recommendation to accept this quote from home heating, cooling and plumbing for the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen to complete the HVAC air handler work as described.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle?
Are these heat pumps or are these, or what, what are these units?
These are heat pumps.
Good. Is, was there any way that we could be, that we could use heat that we take out of the server room and use it elsewhere in the building?
That, we talked about that with Hollis and Miller in the planning phase and they're looking at options with that. But that server room had to have its own unit basically for the cooling side. So we didn't know if that would be a, a way to be able to do that. But they looked at all the options and, and they will, we will be able to take the plans and incorporate back with home heating and see what can be done there, Mr. Gardner.
Any other questions? If not, I'll ask to hear a motion to approve the home heating, cooling, plumbing agreement in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Next item, Mr. Pyle, is yours again, the Vernon Jones change order?
Yes, this is another exciting piece when we talk about nearing completion. The Smith Cotton High School Athletic Complex is another one that's getting there. The district was fortunate, as you know, to be able to get out there at softball. That was the first field to open, had a softball tournament where we could kind of walk the facility, see what was out there, see, blessed with all the things that were done, but also kind of look through it and said, hey, there's some things that we could do to make this even better for the future. So looking at some of those things, I'll list them out. We wanted to look at suggested change orders for additional concrete. Softball home, softball home dugout needed some, some different things done to that to help us with vision and different things for the scoreboard table and, and the announcing area. Parking lot behind soccer and football fields was another change order that we realized that we should have talked about with our team when we designed that, an additional fence for the entire complex. So I'll go through the change orders. It, within these change orders, there are some that were credits and some that were additions. So rock excavation at the practice field, seventy-five thousand dollars. There was a credit for soccer shelters that were covered for it at ninety thousand. Rock drilling for pole bases for baseball and softball at thirty-one thousand. There was a credit for pole vault jumping runways of ninety thousand. We, we changed to a metal roofing substitution at the dugouts for a five thousand dollar savings. Soccer storm line rock excavation was one hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That was due to just needing to go on and just to the rock that had to be moved there. Credit for underlaymen omission for the dugouts, so that saved some money there at a thousand. The concrete sidewalk additions that I mentioned were twenty-five thousand, eighty-six and twenty-five. Overhead and first base dugout, that's an overhead door, is what we were talking about there, at thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. They had to move some block and some different things, so it's more extensive than that line item pointed out. Additional linear, lineal feet of decorative fence and black PVCs to substitute for the entire complex. And that figure is a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred. Rock for new parking lot behind football and soccer fields at twenty-six thousand, nine hundred. And a concrete at paver area by the scoreboard. And that's next down to where we keep the lawnmower and things down near the scoreboard. And that was two thousand sixty-eight. Concrete at soccer bleachers at twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and nineteen. And we're almost there. Concrete behind the third base and softball was two thousand, six hundred and twenty, making the total change order for this work at three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight, twenty-five. And it is my recommendation to accept these change orders from Vernon Jones totaling three hundred and seven thousands, one hundred and sixty-eight, twenty-five.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? It does, really starting to look, I was out at the high, high school last week and seeing the soccer field with the sod on it, that just popped. It was, it's really looking nice, really good.
Something to be proud of. They, Vernon Jones and Hollis and Miller, we meet, met with them last week and we meet every other week. And they talk about Smith Cotton High School Athletic Complex being the premier in the state and one that they're proud to put their name on too. So it just makes us, we're very pleased.
Yes, I can see why. Do I hear a motion to approve Vernon Jones Construction Change Order Number Two in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-five?
One sixty-eight.
Mine says one eighty-six. So which is it, Mr. Pyle?
It is three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight and twenty-five.
Thank you, Scott.
It's, the numbers different?
I think it was, the recommendation got flipped.
Okay.
Apologize for that.
Oh, no, that's fine. I see it now. So for, okay, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle, again, for the Missouri Purple Star designation.
Yes, this is another one we're very excited about as a district. We would like to become a Missouri Purple Star district. We can earn this status by being military friendly, which we are already. And, and very appreciative of, of any of our military men and women who serve. And we want to make a commitment to do this publicly and, and by our Board of Education to make it official. So we want to know, want our families that are connected to the military to know that we, that we will love to have their children in our district. We were going to ensure that the activities are in place to welcome them and be supportive through, through their, whether they move here, whatever we can do to, to make this happen. But to be eligible for a district-wide status, we, our team will be required to include evidence that our Board of Education passed a resol, passes a resolution publicizing the district's support for military students and families. And inside the packet tonight, we have that resolution ready. Want to also point out and then commend Mr. Norton and the high school team, their leadership for already achieving this Purple Star status. So they've helped us as we move forward as a district. And moving to the district-wide Purple Star designation is an excellent way, once again, for us to give back, show our appreciation as a school district to those who serve, men and women that we're thankful for.
I like, I like to add, just when I went up to the Purple Star Ceremony last year when Smith Cotton was recognized. And so those students from other districts, Purple Star districts were, were recognized and spoke. And just the, the level of, of challenge that those military kids often face. I think on average, they change school districts six to eight times. Some of them ten to twelve, some of them two or three in a, in a year. Some of them change countries multiple times during their, their schooling. So they, they, the amount of care and need that some of those families need was, that was illustrated very much in, in those stats, so.
Do anybody have any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Missouri Purple Star Resolution as presented.
So moved.
And a second? It's got a second, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And Dr. Fraley, the SMS Playground Game Time Grant?
Yeah, we're excited to announce, Ms. Michaela Walton, our district grant writer, was successful in helping us out to expand the playground here at SMS. As we know, fourth grade's coming over and the playground out there, that's original equipment. We need some more. We will have a whole lot more bodies to accommodate. And I'm all about keeping kids active and healthy. So we were awarded ninety-three, we, we have to approve the matching amount of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents for the grant that will enable us to purchase this equipment. This does not include the installation of that equipment, I want you to know. But that, that will be an additional cost down the road. But we're really excited to have a matching grant to help us offset that cost. Because playground equipment is incredibly expensive.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Fraley? Not, I'll hear a motion to approve the Sedalia Middle School Playground Game Time Grant, CWO as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the Step Up Agreement, Ms. Gilmore?
Yes, elementary is seeking resources. And one of the resources that we have located and found is a, a resource called Step Up Consulting. And this company will help refine and revise our current elementary K through five proficiency scales in the content areas of math, ELA, science and social studies. This resource will also continue our standard-based journey, continue to support that and then our innovation journey as well. So I am asking for approval for the Step Up Agreement in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars as presented.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gilmore? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Step Up Agreement in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Fraley, Advertising and Sponsorship Policy Agreement?
Yes, I'm, I'm bringing this to you guys. This is a custom, customized policy brought to you by School District Attorney, Tooth and Keeney. As you may be aware, we are going, about to go out for some sponsorships for our scoreboards at the football stadium and at the Smith Cotton High School Gymnasium. MCE, our, our policy writer does not have a policy that governs advertising and sponsorship. So I reached out to our legal team to have that created for us. And I'm asking that we get this in place so we can move forward with our, our sponsorships and the solicitation from our local businesses and companies.
Are there any questions regarding this sponsorship policy and agreement as, as you have in your packet?
It just, you know, it, it will help guide the how-to and the process thereof. There's some things that, you know, sometimes we're not aware of as far as legalities that may come up. But just, you know, we are a public entity, we have equal access stipulations that we have to follow. So this policy will protect the district in that regard.
If there are no questions?
I've, I've got one. Do we have a goal? What's our goal, dollar-wise? Do you have a mind?
Uh, Mr. Milton's still here. We have that lined out. You don't have that in front of you, do you? Yeah, it's basically over, for this particular one?
Yeah.
Would be over a five-year period to pay for everything we just bought. So an amount of what, about six, something popped in my head, six hundred and some thousand, yeah.
Over a five-year period?
Yes. And at some point in time, this will need to be replaced somewhere down the road. This would go into an, an activity fund that would grow for facility improvements and upgrades.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve policy P one seven three five under general administration and the additional rental agreement as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And items for discussion, Mr. Pyle, the Playground Turf?
Yes, the Sedalia School District obtained bids for Playground Turf for Washington Horseman, Parkview, Skyline and Sedalia Middle School in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. The district received bids from four companies at that time. The district recommended completing two of the playgrounds at that time in order to space out the work and also for budgeting purposes. So our Board of Education approved that recommendation to, at that time, to award Midwest Synthetic Turf Professionals to install turf at Washington and Horseman. They did that, did an excellent job this summer and they had been the company that completed at Heber Hunt this, the summer before. So the district would like to now go on and complete the remaining Playground Turf projects in the summer of two thousand twenty-five as we look ahead. Midwest Synthetic Turf Professionals again provided the lowest bid on two of the three schools leading completion at bid time. And they will honor that amount again if awarded the opportunity. We would need to do this before the end of the year, before padding and different things that goes on. So they, like as I mentioned, have just done an excellent job. We've enjoyed working with them. That would allow us to work with that same company again instead of splitting it out between the two and three. So I've attached a bid tabulation sheet just as a reminder for our Board of Education from April of two thousand twenty-four. And also added a quote from them tonight from Midwest Synthetic Turf Professionals as we did decide to add some additional square footage here at the middle school based on what Dr. Fraley just explained with the new equipment and different things, knowing that fourth grade's coming over. So just want to bring that back up tonight. I hope to bring this back in November for consideration and hopefully even a decision then so we can.
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Paner, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Meyer, have you seen an increase? What have you seen? You, you got turf in your playgrounds now? How is it? You loving it?
Good.
I thought so.
Good. So this will be brought back in November for decision?
Yes.
Very good.
Appreciate that he was, would honor that bid and things too.
Yes, that's a nice agreement there. Um, Mr. Curry, SMS Staffing?
Yes, fitting that we are here at SMS this evening to discuss this transition of fourth grade to SMS has been a multi-year process. Within that process, we've had many conversations as a, as an admin team in figuring out what the staffing needs were going to be when we double the size of this building next year. So as you can see, we will have sixteen core teachers from across the district in fourth grade that will move over to this building next year. Fifteen of those sixteen will be used in the teaming process that Mr. Frye has. And then that sixteenth position is going to be utilized as an elective teacher, as a PLTW teacher for, within the rotation cycle for that fourth grade teaming. So when they go through their rotation of specials, that PLTW would be one of those positions. So within that though, you can see the need that's been outlined for additional staffing next year. One would be a school counselor position, three certified teaching positions. And again, those would be an art, music and PE teacher. One administrative assistant to help with the multitude of tasks that are needing to be done every day in that office or in both offices, the counseling office and the front office. And then one instructional assistant position for the library, which would be needed again within that specials rotation. Utilizing also an open elementary assistant principal position to add to the administrative team here at this building next year. And then things that we still will need to line out later in the year as we get ready to move into next year would be the transitioning of special education staff, title staff and EL staff. We'll continue to monitor those numbers at each building across the elementaries and then determine which staff will be pulled from different buildings to, to help staff this building as well as any other, you know, paraprofessionals and IAs. And the discussion of food service obviously will occur as well. But we feel that we'll have enough across the district with some moves that we will be able to, to fill this building and staff this building without adding those. The question marks will still be again, title staffing, special education and EL staffing. As you recall, at the beginning of this year, we had large number of increase in, in populations across the district, even, even at the elementary level. So continuing to monitor those numbers and then determining if there are any additional needs moving into next year will be something we'll, we'll tackle as we, as we get closer. But that's basically where we're at, at this point. And again, we'll evaluate numbers throughout the year in, in hopes that, you know, we, we like it. the year in, in hopes that, you know, we, we like, we like growing, but continuing to have to add staff is, can be problematic.
I apologize if I may be a year out of date, but for how long did we have those additional teachers after COVID? We had some additional teachers?
Two years we had, we had Essar funding for those additional staff.
That's, that's gone, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I apologize. I was thinking maybe those people, if they'd stuck around, would, would be?
No, now we did, if you recall, we added EL teaching positions after that as we did with the war and refugees coming to the districts and those increased numbers, we added teaching staff as a need to address those areas as well.
We were able to absorb all those people into the system, weren't we?
We did, although we, we saw a decrease in title funding that, that had to shift some around to local funds, but yes.
Okay, all right.
So these four new positions are, well, three, four, five, six. That'll be brought back to us probably in the early spring or whenever?
We would like to bring it back sometime before the end of this year so we can go ahead and post those positions and be ready for the hiring process.
Good, yeah.
So, Mr. Curry, I'm just sort of curious here looking at these new positions and I'm wondering, is that you and Dr. Fraley, as you all have had this discussion, have you given any consideration to perhaps lowering the starting age for our instrumental music students down to the middle school so that we can, as Dr. Fraley says, be the premier school district? We can start to match those programs up with other programs in more premier districts?
Yes, yes, that'll be, I mean, that's been part of the conversation that we've had with Mr. Frye as well, working out within his scheduling process for fourth and fifth grade of how to make those rotations possible. I think it'll just be, I think it'll just be a scheduling issue that, that we'll have to work out, but that's something that we've been having conversation about.
And is that something we can do within the confines of the staff we already have in that department or?
No, you would have to, I mean, we would have to have this music position, of course.
Okay, still, okay.
To, to, wait a minute, make sure I've got this right now. So we currently have a music teacher, then this would add a second music teacher.
Yes.
Mr. Fraley, are you talking about a third music teacher or?
Well, if you move instrumental music down, are you going to need another person to cover those instrumental music classes?
No, the thought would be is to how do you divide the two that would be at this building, one instrumental and one vocal?
Okay.
And then obviously if we need, if, if we have the ability within the instrumental teachers at the higher levels at the junior high and high school to, to add some assistance, then we could of course do some co-teaching and stuff like that as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Curry? We'll move on to Mr. Pyle and the Smith Cotton Junior High bleachers.
Yes, our Board of Education approved site improvement projects at Smith Cotton Junior High and Sodae Middle School at our last month meeting in September. A portion of the work approved at the junior high included gymnasium renovation, as you recall. The district asked Collison Miller not to include the gym bleachers in that, what we, what the Board of Education approved. It was an opportunity for us to save ten percent on the, on the bleacher package. We can still get exactly the, the bleacher that we hoped for, that we expect and we can do that through purchasing through Heartland Seating and taking advantage of the education plus consortium. So just bringing that tonight just to make the Board of Education aware and would bring this back again in November. It's another one that we would have to have a, a decision on before the end of November to get to the timeline to get it here in time.
Okay.
I do want to point out that in the, in the Board of Education packet, it talked about a four-bank option and we have met as a team and talked that we would probably actually look at a three-bank option, which just means that we would have one long continuous set of bleachers like these here at Sodae Middle School on one side and then on, on, that would be on the east side of the bleachers, on the east wing and then on the opposite side, no, excuse me, that'd be the south and then on the north, it would be the two where it splits to go into that, into those locker rooms. So that would be, it would be a thousand dollars more to do that. So it's just to kind of give you an update, what's in your packet is, we will bring a different one back for you in November.
In November.
So it would take the two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand to two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand two-eighty-five, plus they would remove and get rid of the bleachers that are there.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? Okay, we'll look at that next month. And Mr. Pyle, the elementary restroom renovation projects?
Yes, the district is continuing to the efforts to achieve goals set in our long-range facilities plan. As you guys know, one of our focus areas within that plan was to improve restrooms at Heber Hunt, Horseman, and Washington Elementary Schools. The district will utilize the expertise of Hollison Miller for planning this construction process again. We did go ahead and advertise for bids recently and the overview of the scope of work listed for each school. Heber Hunt would get restroom renovations and fixture replacement in each, in each bathroom. Horseman Elementary would be the same on, on the renovations and fixture replacement along with limited piping replacement and reconfiguration of the, of the restroom behind the gym. There's a little restroom that we would need to restructure there. At Washington Elementary School, reconfiguration of student restrooms, restroom renovation and fixture replacement in place of staff restrooms like the others and more piping replacement throughout that building. So just want to kind of make our board aware, I guess, again, that the bid opening is scheduled for November seventh for those projects within that set and we'll bring that back in November as well for further consideration and a possible decision.
Okay, next is Mr. Pyle, the riding spreader, sprayer machine equipment?
Yes, the district would like to purchase additional equipment to help maintain our turf and grounds at the Smith Cotton High School Athletic Complex and at our other sites as needed. Talking about turf here again tonight, even at the elementary schools, this, this equipment purchase would help across the district. So we did reach out to Advanced Turf Solutions with an inquiry of a riding spreader, sprayer machine. The quote for this machine with attachments totaled twenty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. This would allow, this machine would allow the team to apply disinfectant to the turf fields as needed, herbicide application, fertilizer application, and field marking. So just want to thank the Board of Education for consideration and this is another that I'd like to bring back for November, decision and consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle on this one? And the rest of our evening will be just information. Dr. Fraley, MoCat investment options?
Yes, let me get to that. So according to policies and statute, we have the, the opportunity to take advantage of certain investments within certain parameters and through our agreement with MoCat and Mr. Jason Hoffman, who's our representative with MoCat, they reached out to us, we've been working back and forth, Lisa, Hammerly, and myself. They did a fund balance projection investment opportunity, basically a cash flow analysis of our district to come up with a plan of action should we choose to move some of our monies into MoCat to maximize our interest. Right now, we are with our checking account, our two accounts with Equity Bank, we're at the prime rate minus twelve basis points, I believe I'm correcting that. The prime rate is right now hovering four-point-seven-five to five is how it's reported. I think as like today, it was four-point-eight-three. There, most people in a financial order are predicting that that rate is going to start being, start falling over the next several months, maybe as to much as two-a-half point at a time. So what they did is they analyzed our current cash flow, our current expenditures, our current fund balances, and came up with a plan for proposed short-term and long-term revolving investments. That would maximize our potential earning with our interest rates. They've given some investment recommendations. You'll see that these are based on when we last met via Zoom with MoCat, which was the seventh of October. They give you a, a ladder concept as far as staggering those investments and their maturity dates and then also always keeping a level of liquidity that would more than cover our ongoing expenses. So basically how much money can you afford to stick in these short and long-term investments? And when I say long-term investment in the public sector, that is not, don't think, you know, ten-year CDs, that is not what this is. We're talking long-term would be in, you know, eighteen months to two years, maybe three max. Most of these investments would be in the periods of, of months, not years. So basically they're constantly managing your money, putting them over into these different funds to, to make it work the hardest it can while it sits in the bank.
I've just got one, one question and I can't remember where I've, I've picked this up from. Is there such a thing as making too good of a return that the IRS starts looking at some of these? I think the term is arbitrage or something like that?
Yeah, and that has to do with some of your lease, like our lease purchase funding and how fast you spend the money down and your, you know, IRS rules dictate those terms as far as those fundings, but as far as what these, I don't believe fall under that category because these, this is money that's already, that you already have, it's not money that you're borrowing. Because right now we're borrowing the twenty-five million dollar lease purchase funding that we went through is essentially other, other money that we're bringing in, it falls under some different rules. But Mr. Gardner, you may, as a, in your line of work, you may have more knowledge than me in that area.
I only ran into it when, when the water department was doing a lease purchase on some things.
Yes, it definitely, arbitrage does come into play when you're talking about the lease purchase fundings.
Okay.
But this is money that you already have in the bank, so there's not a limitation as to how much that can earn.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Yeah, that's good. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Fraley? And then Dr. Fraley, I think you've finished it out, probably the demographic breakdown.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the board aware, I had Ms. Engel print out a copy of our current demographics across the district. I thought it was of interest to the board and it was certainly interesting to me and to the public as far as your percentages. I'll announce these out loud just for public knowledge. So as a district as a whole, our Hispanic population is at twenty-one percent. Our American Indian or Alaska Native population is, it registers at zero percent, but we, we have such few number that it, it does not achieve a percentage point.
Two percent.
Yes, below one percent. Asian, one percent. Black or African-American is four percent. A native, native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander at one percent. White at sixty-five percent. Mixed race, nine percent. That, that's a demographic breakdown as we report it to state. Our free and reduced lunch numbers, we are fifty-five percent free lunch at two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-four students, are reduced at four-hundred-and-forty-four students, which is nine percent. And thirty, only thirty-six percent of our student population is full lunch pay. It's a foretelling of the economic status of the community at large.
Yeah, that was interesting to know, thank you for that. Any questions for Dr. Fraley? And we'll move on to the attendance reports.
Yeah, you see that the ninety-nine, the ninety percent of students at ninety percent of the time, which is where we get our APR score from, we're currently as a district at eighty-six point eight zero. On August thirty-first, we're at eighty-five point five eight. We would love that number to climb above ninety percent and we have not seen that since before COVID. We will continue, I know the schools continue to work, you know, to, to get those kids in those seats.
And the ADA report?
The ADA, average daily attendance district-wide is without, the Early Childhood Center is ninety-four point six-zero percent, which is not too bad. Of course, it's early in the year, haven't hit the flu season. With the Early Childhood is ninety-four point four-one percent. That is the number that drives the state formula payments.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley on the attendance reports? On to membership and enrollment.
Yes, you'll see that we have a total of, without, without the Early Childhood Center, we have a full-time membership of forty-eight, four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine. We have twenty-eight point zero-four part-timers. So our total body, part-time body count, sixty-one. Our enrollment from residents, resident enrollment, and this is pre-K through twelfth grade, is five-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-two. Non-resident enrollment, which is largely at the high school and the Early Childhood Center, it's actually, it's all at the high school, Early Childhood Center. The high school being that those are Dresden students and at the Early Childhood, we service all Pettis County, for a total of forty-nine non-resident. Our enrollment September count, two-thousand-twenty-four is five-thousand-two-hundred-and-eleven. That is our enrollment last year at this time with five-thousand-seventy-one and a difference of one-hundred-and-forty more students this year than last year. And some little districts across the state of Missouri, that would be their whole K-12 school system.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? Okay, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to closed executive session, please?
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sodae School District Number Two Hundred, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section Six Ten dot zero-two-one, our SMO subsection one, legal actions, three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting, thirteen personnel records, fourteen records which are protected, eighteen public safety or law enforcement, and nineteen security system and structural plans by law of the Missouri statutes, will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four at Sodae Middle School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kempton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.
Thank you, everyone.